Being seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bossbus?
Here.
Commissioner Bauer?
Here.
Commissioner Gage?
Here.
Commissioner Gary?
Here.
Commissioner Lynn?
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Here.
Commissioner Twardy?
Here.
Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If those with cell phones, if you would please put them on, vibrate or silence them by turning them off, we would appreciate it. Thank you. I'd also like to welcome Jen back to the commission. First item of business, item number one, public comment on scheduled agenda items. Any person may reserve time to speak on an agenda item, not to exceed three minutes per person. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item? The public hearing doesn't count. You allow ample time to speak at the public hearing. This is any other agenda item other than the public hearings. I would guess it would be the, like, item 4B, City Attorney. If that was to be reconsidered, where there'd be a chance for people to speak at that point? So we just wait and see if that does occur at that point?
Yeah, 4B would be, you should ask the board to talk about the district library or the Jorgensen Market request to reconsider.
Okay. According to attorney, the, under communications, 4A and 4B, if there are individuals that would like to speak on that item, any of those items.
Close enough.
4A, and if you'd give us your name, John, please.
John Schaefer.
Okay, John Schaefer. Anyone else on 4A? On 4B? Let's start right here.
I'm on 4B.
Ma'am?
Maureen Kim.
4B?
Maureen Kim.
Sir?
We're on 4B.
You're on 4B, okay. Name?
Ken Rendell and Eric Martin.
Okay. Ken Rendell? Is Eric also wanting to speak, or just you?
I may say a few words.
Okay, okay. Anyone else? Yes.
4B.
Thank you. What's Jen's first title? Is she deputy city clerk?
Deputy city clerk.
Okay, deputy city clerk.
Under the consent agenda, A, minute approval. Approval of the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of March 6th, 6, 2017. Recommended action, approve the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of March 6, 2017. Item two, acceptance of the minutes of the following boards and commissions. A, airport board from February 9, 2017. B, local development finance authority from November 7, 2016. Recommended action, accept the minutes of the various boards and commissions. Item B, appointments and resignations. Appointment to the construction board of appeals. Recommended action, appoint Daria Nebu to the construction board of appeals. Nebu, excuse me. And to fill the balance of a term to expire on June 30, 2021, and send a letter of thanks to Steve Garrish for his service to this board. Item two, under appointments and resignations, reappointment to the superior district library board. Recommended action, reappoint John Schaefer to the district library board for a term to expire December 30, 2019. Item three, under appointments and resignations, resignation from the planning commission. Recommended action, accept the resignation of Christina Dennison-Solms from the planning commission for a term that is set to expire on April 19, 2019, and send a letter of thanks for her service. Item four, under appointments and resignations, resignation from the zoning board of appeals. Recommended action is accept the resignation of Eric Wititski from the zoning board of appeals for a term that is set to expire on June 1, 2018, and send a letter of thanks for his service. Item C, communications. From the local development finance authority, approval of the amended LDFA bylaws. Recommended action, approve the amended LDFA bylaws as presented. Item D, city manager's report. Authorization of a contract with the state of Michigan for the annual purchase of road salt. Recommended action, authorize the city manager to contract with the state of Michigan for the annual supply of road salt. Item two, under city manager's report. Approval of amended county fire and EMS mutual aid agreements. Recommended action, approve both the EMS and fire mutual aid agreements for Chippewa County as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there any commissioner at this time would like something explained, further explained on the consent agenda? Otherwise, we will need a motion. Commissioner Gage?
So move we approve the consent agenda.
Support.
And move supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Bossbus?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item three, special orders of business. Adoption of a payment in lieu of taxes ordinance. A, public comments and action on ordinance.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Sioux State Marie has recently been approached by the Woda Group about a proposed development within the Maloney's Alley vicinity. More specifically, the Woda Group is proposing the construction of a 65-unit multifamily development situated near the corner of Maloney Alley and Osborne Boulevard. In its own words, "The Woda Group intends for the vast majority of the residential units, 63, in this development to be available for restricted but affordable rents to assist working families and seniors obtain quality safe and energy efficient housing within downtown Sioux State Marie. This development would be manifested through the construction of a four-story residential building on the current footprint of the 4,000-square-foot warehouse, the former Claremont Trucking Building, and its surrounding parking area. The Woda Group is also proposing a large community room for the benefit of the tenants and their guests, as well as office and retail space which would be available for rent at market rate. Per the included communication, the Woda Group is formally requesting that a payment in lieu of taxes arrangement in support of the development be approved by the city commission. The Woda Group is projecting that the total cost of the development would exceed $9 million and may approach $11 million. The Woda Group has also expressed a willingness to execute with the city a municipal services agreement that would pay the city annually in an amount of $15,500 in addition to the revenues the city would receive through the pilot arrangement. The MSA would provide for the amount of $15,500 to be increased annually per the published consumer price index for all products Midwest region with this amount not exceeding 3% per annum. And just as a clerical note, the structure of $15,500 per annum adjusted annually for inflation and 3% differs from one communication that's included within the materials, which lists out a smaller MSA amount and 4%. The scope of services provided would not include utilities or applicable special assessments, which will be paid separately and as duly established by the city. A pilot ordinance has also been included for review and consideration by the commission, which would include the payment in lieu of taxes based on 3% of net shelter rents as mentioned, being remitted to the various taxing jurisdictions, and would further provide for the service charge provided for within the ordinance to include an amount equal to what the abhorrent taxes would have been on the commercial portion of the development had it been taxed separately. A first reading of the ordinance was approved at the March 6 regular meeting of the city commission. Based on the information presented, it is projected that the total initial financial benefit to the city from this development would be about $28,093 annually. Additionally, it should be noted that the subject parcel upon which this development would occur currently has an active obsolete property rehabilitation act exemption certificate in place that was previously granted by the city commission in 2009 for a proposed development for medical office buildings. This incentive, which became effective on December 31, 2009, should be repealed if it is the will of the city commission for the project at hand to proceed in order to prevent any contradictions between the obsolete property rehabilitation act incentive and the specific development. This is addressed more completely in the following agenda item. However, it should be noted that the city currently receives pilot revenues exceeding $70,000 from nine different property sources. Accordingly, if the city commission would like to move forward with this development, it will need to take the four following actions. First, to hold a duly scheduled public hearing on the presented ordinance and the, excuse me, and the adoption of the ordinance. Secondarily, adopt the included ordinance as presented. Third, adopt the included municipal services agreement. And as a note, there is another version in front of the commissioners, which has some clarifying language on what's included and the fact that ambulance services would be billed separately. As well as, fourth, adopting the included resolution of support as requested by the developer. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay. City Manager, could you maybe introduce the gentleman here and have them present the project again so that anyone who had missed it the first time would hear the presentation before we go to the public hearing?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Craig Patterson with the Woda Group is here tonight, and he is prepared to present to the city commission, guests, and community.
Very good, thanks for the opportunity to re-present. Craig Patterson, I'm with the Woda Group. My office is in Mackinac City. Our corporate office is in Columbus, Ohio. This would be an opportunity to again reinforce why Osborne Commons could be a benefit to this community. As you know, as we presented before, we're proposing 65 units of residential housing, a combination of one, two, and three-bedroom units, that would be located downtown near 146 Ridge, just one block south of the Ramada. We, the Woda Group, have built housing throughout the state since 2002. We have another project on site within the city, Wood Creek Manor, which is a 32-unit property that we received a pilot on approximately six years ago. Nothing's really changed about the Woda Group since we were here six years ago, except that we are vertically integrated like we were before. It'll be our general contractor that will build this property if approved and funded by Mishta, and we will source our contractors out of this area in Michigan. In Traverse City, we had a property that was built back about three years ago, 72 units, new construction, 32 out of 37 of the contractors came from the Traverse City area or within the state of Michigan. Our goal is to hire locally when we can. We have a bidding process to do this. City Manager mentioned that up to $11 million worth of investment. What you see here and the elevation here, which is also seen on the screen, this is the footprint on the ground floor, which has a combination of 14 residential units and commercial off to the west. Then the purple and the blue, this is the commercial component, as well as all of this is residential. This particular zoning was approved last Thursday night by the ZBA to allow us to go forward with a combination of commercial and residential on the ground floor. We have 70 parking spaces to service the tenants. This parking would be exclusive to the tenants and their guests. The elevation is four up, as you can see here, and as you will see as I scroll down, this is the elevation for the property. It's a flat roof to try to integrate with the surrounding neighborhood. I might mention that the incomes here are targeted to low to moderate income working families. However, that does not mean that residents who are seniors, 55 and up, cannot live here. Everyone who comes to live in this property will have to verify that they have the income to support the rents that are going to be asked for in this particular property. This property will be Green Enterprise certified, which means that the SEER ratings on all the HVAC units, the insulation, the windows, the appliances will be Energy Star. I bring that up because we will have to abide by the guidelines on the rents plus the utility allowances that will be required on this property, and all that comes from Mishta through the HUD models. But the reason why Green Enterprise is so important is the residents who will live here will have more energy efficiency than they may be already used to in the community or outside in other residential units, which will give them more disposable income theoretically to spend in the adjacent neighborhoods and to live up their lives and support their families because of that efficiency. We have believed through a third-party market study that was commissioned by us called a staff shop market study that was published on December 29, which I think, City Manager, was that part of the packet? Or were you gonna?
No, it's not. That was received by administration after the packet was distributed.
Okay, so, there is, at disposal, City Manager, I brought it along, a market study that was completed in December, which states that the income targets here, that residents living here up to $36,300 per annum will be the cap for a family of four, I believe it is, and yet some of the tenants would be able to live there as low as $9,600 a year. Now, who are these people that may live there? It could be young professionals starting at the lower end of the wage rate, but in the $30,000 range. It could be, it could be retail clerks, it could be young entrepreneurs, it could be somebody working for the...
Craig, could you move the microphone?
Sure.
Just, because that's for folks listening at home.
Okay, very good. So it could be for somebody working as a bank teller, somebody working at the hospital or memorial, people that fall in those income ranges. It could also be a family that is a student family, where one of the individuals in a family of two, it has to be a family of two or more, but it has to be family, it can't be just a bunch of students loading up, but a family where one of the two is a student, and then the combined wages that they have would be able to support the rents. It could also be a single parent family that is a student that has the wage. So that's how, to answer the question from two weeks ago, how that works. Our management company will manage this. Our management company has a very rigorous qualification. First and foremost, fair housing. We don't discriminate, no landlord should discriminate, but we are under the same guidelines of all the other type of landlords in town. That means no age, sex, gender, orientation, anything like that. We cannot, we cannot withhold their ability if they qualify. But we also look at criminal record, we look at their financial stability, we go through all of that, that you normally go through, and if somebody has a felon, we don't have to take them. And frankly, if something happens while on property, we can evict based on criminal activity. But this is our own management company, and like I mentioned before, the senior vice president of our management company, the same level as I am, if you were to call me and say, Craig, you promised and you said you would manage, I would go directly to her and to ownership to say, hey, we have an issue we need to resolve. With that, I think I've covered it all. The pilot is absolutely essential for us to be able to score well enough to win the funding. The market study says this, when it comes to Lytec properties in town, all of them are 100% occupied. The market study says there is enough capacity in the PMA, the primary marketing area, which includes everything about in, to the east and the west of the shoreline, not to Bremley, but I mean, to, and near, and south about to the Bremley exit. That's what they define as the PMA. And what that says is that there is a need and can sustain 63 units. It might be a little bit less than that, because when we commissioned the market study, we thought we were gonna, I think it's 57 easily, Lytec, low to moderate income housing units, and seven market rates. Among the market rate units in town, there are roughly 344 of them among the 700 total units that they went out and queried, and of that 344, roughly 99% of them are occupied. There is a great need for rental housing in town. I know there are some questions about, or were questions last time, about the mix. Once again, we have 63 units that will be Lytec, or low to moderate income, two market rate units, and then we have the commercial component that I just described. With that, I can answer questions.
We're gonna go to a public hearing pretty quick, but just, one, don't go away yet, Commissioner Gary has a question, but I also have, in the project in Menominee, you said that that is a, or a project much like here, they have two market rate units, and the rest are, whatever that initial stands for?
I think low to moderate income housing, the same, it's Mishta housing.
And that you presently purchased property next door?
Well, when we acquired the main building, which was a historic building, we acquired two historic buildings. We were gonna put low to moderate income in both buildings, but we decided after we could not get a market study to support 13 more units to make it market rate, but we got a major grant from MEDC in order to make that happen on the 13 units. In the original building, we have 42 units of low to moderate income, like we propose here, and two market rate units, and a commercial component is 1,600 square feet, which we rented to a nonprofit occupational therapy group that's helping that's disabled in town.
But then MEDC gave you a grant?
For the other building.
And that is market rate?
That will be market rate, we're finishing that up, it'll be finished at the end of May.
So there is money available for market rate units?
There could be, but everything at MEDC has changed, I can't say what their appetite is at the current time. And it's very difficult to blend them. We tried to blend an MEDC portion to offset the cost of our, our commercial and our market rate, the two units, and it, they wouldn't allow it because they said it was double-dipping Lytec with, this was a CDBG grant that we received for a blighted property similar.
I don't want to get too much involved with questioning at this point until we get the public hearing, but Commissioner Gary has a question.
I just thought, at the last meeting, you had a good explanation of why there are only two market rate units there, and we have some new people in the audience, and I know that I saw that there were gonna be some people watching, as to why you can't add more market rate.
Sure. Well, we've done everything we can to add as many market rate, because when I met the mayor the first time with the city manager, he talked about the need, it was very clear. And I said, I'll do what I can. In fact, Mishta has now created a scoring model that will incent you for putting at least 10%. So that day, I said, we're gonna try 10%. What happened is the country elected Trump, and Mr. Trump said, look, I think corporate tax rates are too high, so we're gonna cut the tax rate, which meant that the equity market that we had counted on to fund the overall project, which would allow us to support more debt, et cetera, for the market rate, collapsed somewhat. And now, instead of a 98 to a dollar for this deal, it's down in the low 90s, there's just not enough. We, in order to put in the two market rates, had to take a hit on our developer fee, which we weren't gonna have to take a hit on the developer fee before, before Mr., well, President Trump got elected.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Craig. At this time, we'll go to the public hearing, and that, anyone that would like to speak on the project or about the project is certainly able to come forward, and we can start, we'll make sure everyone that wants an opportunity will have an opportunity, so the first time around, hopefully we'll just go around one time. We won't have people coming back and forth, so say what you have to say in a, I believe it's a three-minute period? Is it? Okay, thank you. So, Linda, if you'd like to start, and as you, if, as you're coming up, I would just ask those coming up if they would identify themselves for the record, we would appreciate it.
I'm Linda LaFleur, many of yous might know me. I'm the director of the Sioux State Marie Housing Commission and have been for about 26 years. I know I only have three minutes, and I hope I can give enough information to at least have you question some of the information that's here, and maybe get a working team together to get the rest of the information together, to see if this is really what the Sioux State Marie, Michigan needs. Been doing this for 26 years, I lived here for 60 years. This place is very, very important to me. We have over 630 low and moderate income housing. I own 264 with the city's cooperation when we signed an intent to a cooperation back in 1961 and started building in 1965. We built on more, which was an additional 54 single-family units, and then it was agreed upon that the city wanted us to do it, and had an agreement with HUD, and for us to create it. We also supply 50 vouchers in our residential area to help subsidize the tenants that may or may not qualify for the same type of development that Woda wants to put in, so at least we can help all the citizens that we can in Sioux State Marie. We are currently not full, so I don't know which one market study that was used, but we are not full. I know other developments that are not full. We have very, very, very small waiting lists. My four bedrooms have nobody on them. My two, one, two, and three bedrooms have maybe one or two. Right now, I looked, day before yesterday, or pardon me, Friday, I had 12. So 264 units, and I have 12. Students I do help in public housing, whether it's one person or not. The only clarification that HUD has on that is they cannot be, what's the word I'm looking for, cannot be claimed on their parents' taxes, which all makes sense to us taxpayers. I mean, if they can afford to go to college, the parents can afford, then therefore they do. The unfortunate part of that, when they don't qualify for affordable housing, and they don't, is they're gonna go to the private sector. We all know that. And until we can get a handle on our private sector, having more... The only clarification that HUD has on that is they cannot be, what's the word I'm looking for, cannot be claimed on their parents' taxes, which all makes sense to us taxpayers. I mean, if they can afford to go to college, the parents can afford, then therefore they do. The unfortunate part of that, when they don't qualify for affordable housing, and they don't, is they're going to go to the private sector. We all know that. And until we can get a handle on our private sector, having more affordable .........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Evening, Mayor and Commissioner.
Evening, Justin.
Justin, Downtown Development Office. I just wanted to mention a few things. One of the issues that you had brought up specifically about the MEDC grants for other sources of revenue for market rate units, and the MEDC specializes in historic preservation grants, the buildings that were worked on in Menominee were both historic restorations. And so for new construction, there are very little tools other than brownfield, and there's something called new market tax credits, which we have not fully investigated or had success with. But, but the downtown Sioux State Marine, we don't have those very large historic buildings like in other communities where they might have an abandoned factory or something along those lines like what was built in Menominee by WODA Group. So, we are seeing a lot of really great movement though with our historic buildings and, and the facade grant programs and the rental rehabilitation programs through the MEDC. Right now, I have 12 market rate units that are being looked at, six on Portage Avenue, and actually six, all 12 on Portage Avenue there, as well as we've had two new market rate housing developments specifically looking at downtown Sioux State Marine just since the, in the last month. And we have a lot of great conversation coming out of that. And one of the things that I heard from one of the developers is specifically looking at downtown Sioux State Marine for market rate housing is by having clustered and clustered living and density in our downtowns of all levels of income, it has a tremendous impact. I will say, Linda LaFord's discussion was very helpful, and it does, all of our market studies do point to the fact that we would be not only bringing in, you know, maybe new people to town, but also seeing people move and upgrade in their living, you know, in their, where they live. And so we do know that there will most likely be some, you know, upward momentum or changes or people wanting to live closer where they work. And it is true to a certain extent that downtown Sioux State Marine, the city of Sioux State Marine is, 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 you know, we're large by, by area, and so I think that's why it makes sense to have people living in a, more close to our downtown location. But the other two things I wanted to mention is that downtown Detroit is a great example. I would say on a, on a larger scale of what's happening, you'll still see, you see downtown Detroit coming back, housing is a big part of that, the urban core is getting stronger and stronger, but you see the urban rings and the suburban neighborhoods tending to stay at a higher vacancy rate. And a lot of that is because new housing is coming online that is higher-end, brand-new, new construction and very appealing to people to live. So there is some positives and negatives in terms of our full kind of community at large. The other thing that I just wanted to bring up that I've been thinking about a little bit is preparation for future growth. And so, while I fully understand and respect what Ms. LaFord said and, you know, perhaps other housing units that are out there, if the lock job, when the lock job happens, which will be coming up, or any other large projects, there will be, you know, our, our community is at a low point in our population, I believe we'll see an upswing in the next few years. And so preparing for all levels of income in our downtown will have a large impact and making sure that our buildings are ready for more people moving into the community.
Thank you. I'll give you just a couple of seconds to think about it. I thought we would have a little more discussion than this, but... Okay, we're going to, we'll close the public hearing. Yeah, City-
That bathroom works.
So, City Commissioner. Commissioner Twardy.
Thank you. I've just, I've been going back and forth on this project so much that I don't think I've slept really in the last month. And it's not because I don't respect WODA Group, and it's not because I don't respect low-income housing or MISTHA. And one of the things that keeps going off in my mind over and over and over again is the fact that I really firmly believe one of the reasons that we are a low to moderate income area is because we're not building what we need to be building. And we have eight major entities, and actually, when I start naming them off, I always find another one. We have at least eight major entities in city limits that support high income, but we're not building places for them to live. And so when you look at, we've got the Corps of Engineers, we've got the Coast Guard, we've got War Memorial Hospital, we've got Border Patrol, Customs, Precision Edge, Lake Superior State University, the tribal, all the tribal entities, UPISD, and Sewer Republic Schools. We're not building, that was 10, we're not building places for these people to live, and I think that that is what is bringing down our income levels within the city of Sioux State Marine. Now, I just, and like I said, I feel really pressured on this project, I feel like this came up really fast, we have to make a decision really fast. And it's a long-term investment, and I understand that when there is a pilot and there's a development, that they need a long length of time. I would have loved to break in my taxes when I bought my business, but that, that was just a joke, but I understand that they have to have a long-
You mean you wouldn't have?
I would have loved to, right, right. I understand you have to have a long relationship, but I really seriously think that in order for us to make really good decisions and, on this, we need to have a work session. And I, I think that I've been really well-educated and not, not well, I shouldn't say well-educated, I've been very quickly educated on what low-income housing is. I, there's a lot of questions that I have still about this project, and I really think, I would like to make a recommendation that we do a full work session as a commission, we educate ourselves on what this really means about coming into the community, because you're talking about two decades worth of, you know, payment and move taxes, and I, we got to think about the legacy votes, what's going to be happening to the commission 10 years down the road. We have two legacy votes right now that are affecting us. One is the parking garage, and the other one is, you know, out on not doing sewer and water out by Sherman Park. And those are affecting us currently, decisions that were made a while ago, and we really need to be careful. And so I would love to kind of slow down this locomotive and let's all educate ourselves on what we, what it really means to the city, not saying, oh, I don't want it to happen. I understand that he has a May submission, there is a fall submission also. And so that's what I'm, I would like to make a recommendation for that.
Commissioner Gary.
I wonder if it would be possible to put this, Mr. Mayor, on the screen, I just wanted to show the audience.
If Lonnie can make it happen?
Is it possible? Oh, yeah, it's here.
As we all know, this is one of our city commission goals, to develop Maloney's Alley. We had some money from Michigan Municipal League and from others to kind of do a charade, come up with a plan to try to figure out what would be the highest and best use for that area. And this was the rendering that came out of that, and if you can see it, it's a four-story residential building. We didn't say whether it was affordable or whether it was market, and it's got retail on the ground floor. It looks very, very much like what WODA has presented us with for the plan for Maloney's Alley. We have a developer that has negotiated freely with the seller through a broker, the city is not involved in that process. The only involvement that we have then is to look at this and say, is there a need for affordable housing? Of course, that's up to the WODA Group to determine, they have to do the due diligence, they have to spend the time looking at it, and they have to make sure they can make their payments. And if they can't, frankly, it'll probably turn into a market rate or something else, just like the West Pier did. But this transaction is the WODA Group's transaction. They're coming to us with the opportunity to put a nine to 11 million dollar project that looks, I think, similar to what we had envisioned Maloney's Alley would look like. We wanted to have retail in Maloney's Alley, we wanted to have housing in Maloney's Alley, and we wanted that area to be fixed up. So are we a community of no? Or are we a community of yes? It's our responsibility to make sure that we have the infrastructure here to deliver, to help the economy grow, and I've heard all of us say at one point in time, that doggone this department or that department, we're always scaring business away, we're always snubbing growth, and why doesn't Sioux State Marine have this, that, or the other thing? Linda does a great job at Sioux Housing, and I'm not saying that we should do this to try to put them out of business, I think we should do this to complement the services that they have. The quote that I had that she said is right from the US Census Bureau, and I said at the last meeting, our median income in Sioux State Marine in the city is $32,000, much less than the state of Michigan, it's less than Chippewa County, and 52% of our residents, our households, have the earnings of less than $35,000, which is somewhere near what they need. This is a, a great-looking project, it's a professional project. I personally know what WODA does with their projects and how they manage their projects, and I've been in a lot of their projects in the UP and in Traverse City and other places. Their professional management group, not that we don't have a lot of professional management groups here. The argument that we got to have market rate, that's great, but I looked at, if you look at Bingham Court Apartments, West Pier Apartments, and Woodfield Terrace Apartments, we have 354 market rate apartments in town. That doesn't include McGahey's Apartments, I don't know how many he's got up there. And then there's another apartment group, and then also the student apartments that are on the hill that Harwood's on. We do have quite a few market rate apartments. Do we need more? The studies that we had done were to see if we could concentrate some housing downtown to do what they're doing in Detroit. In fact, I was in Detroit this morning and heard from the head of Olympia, and they talked about the incredible changes that Detroit has made. And his remarks were, somebody's got to start the action. I mean, we've got somebody here that's going to start some action in Sioux State Marine, break ground, build a building. Justin Nepper had said after the presentation at the last meeting, he actually got a call from the other people that were talking about looking at market rates. I mean, when something starts moving, it starts moving. You know, I, I think that we need to be a community of yes, and I think we need to, to look at this development. The other thing I'd like to mention, just real briefly, because I saw a lot of negatives on social media about the city trying to hide this, well, the process is, the WODA Group applied to the city for a pilot. It was published on our agenda, which is made public every Thursday on the website. We have public meetings, and then all of our minutes are public, and you can YouTube our videos as well. So we do everything in the open, very transparent. So if anybody thinks we ever tried to hide anything, I don't know how you could do that. And we comply 100% with Open Meeting Act, in fact, we over-comply with the Open Meeting Act, so.
Yeah, we try to be as transparent as possible, and the vote last time was to bring it to this meeting, which is a public comment meeting, and that's what I say, when, when you get two folks that are willing to come up and speak, and we have a room full of people, and I got other issues, I know we have other issues on the agenda, but if it was a burning desire either way, I would have kind of hoping we, and we know it's out there, I mean, there, there are people talking about it all the time, that there would be people here to speak in favor or speak in opposition to that, so, so that the commission at least gets a, gets a sense of, of where we're at, so, thank you for the comments.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gage.
I certainly appreciate the, the thoughts and comments of my, my colleagues on the commission. Commissioner Gary makes fantastic points and certainly understands this. First, I want to address in terms of transparency and in terms of, of this public hearing, I agree with you 100%. I, I spent literally all day on a Facebook thread with people talking to me about city commission issues, and I mentioned probably 15 or 16 times, there's a city commission meeting tonight at 7:00 PM, and it is a point to help people understand, it is so much better for me to listen to your opinions if you come here and tell me them here instead of posting them on my Facebook page. That's just a side note. Commissioner Gary used a term that I, I really liked, and that term was due diligence, and I think, I, you know, I really like this project, I think this is a fantastic thing that could really benefit our downtown. But if we're doing our due diligence as a commission, we're doing it properly, one of the things I really want to look at before we, before I cast a vote in support of it is that housing study that was referred to, and then whatever other development documents or memos or whatever sort of package can help shed more light on how we came, how, how the WODA Group put the, the package together, just so we can understand it better, to help justify putting it downtown and having as many of them market rate. I don't, I don't have any problem supporting low and moderate income housing and, and understanding that it's, it is, like, like Justin Nepper said, in an effort to help strengthen our downtown population density. I think that's an incredibly important step to growing our downtown. However, I want to make sure that if I'm going to cast my vote to allow a company to access some of our incentives that we can use to entice businesses to come and to put things into downtown, namely a pilot and a municipal services agreement, I want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence. And so I, I completely agree with Commissioner Twardy that if we can put together a commission work session to discuss this, I know that about three weeks ago or so, we did have some talk about potentially scheduling a work session, and I don't think we were able to ever- talk about potentially scheduling a work session, and I don't think we were able ever to schedule that and get that to come to fruition. And that's, that's how it goes. But I think, I wanted that two weeks ago, and I want that now. I think having a chance for all of us to sit in a room and have some very frank conversations about this is an important thing.
Commissioner Lynn.
I think the three commissioners make some excellent points, by the way. And you all know me, what I've said, I want market-rated housing in Sioux St. Marie. We need that. However, I do not see any corporation contractor knocking down the doors in Sioux St. Marie to build market-rated housing. We have someone who wants to spend $9 to $11 million. Unless there's, the city manager knows of some company that's interested in doing this for Maloney's Alley, I hope you're correct. I'd like to see that. But I will agree with, with Kathy that we need to take, let's make sure we're doing the right thing. But if nobody else comes forward with the dollars for market-rated housing, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for subsidized, taxpayer-subsidized housing. Oh, by the way, one other thing. I've been here since 1981, and I am second hearing that the future of Sioux St. Marie is on the lot job. We've been hearing, hearing this damn thing for decades, and it's getting old. It hasn't happened, and by the time I leave here in November and maybe leave for somewhere else eventually, this still won't happen.
Mr. Bauer.
Am I to understand then that the issue at this moment is now whether or not we should have a work session because we had the motion and a second, I believe?
No, we didn't. There's, there's been no motion.
Oh, second.
I thought there was a motion from Commissioner Torri.
It was a recommendation. We're still talking at this point, I thought. But there was no motion, right?
It was just a recommendation.
Recommendation. That was the support of the recommendation, and you have a support of the recommendation.
Yeah, we've talked about, and you've all made some very good points. Lynda LaFord made some very good points. The WODA group obviously has had a good track record, track record of success. I don't think they would be here proposing to spend $9 to $11 million if it was going to tank or if they thought that that possibility exists. MISTDA is not out there to fund projects that are going to fail. I'm not saying that that doesn't happen from time to time, of course, but still, I will say just, you know, I'm not voting again, I wouldn't vote against a work session. I'm just saying that I don't think a work session is gonna change my mind any. We do need to be a community of yes. I, you know, we talk about upward momentum within the structured, you know, the, the housing as we see it now. And I think that it was Don, Commissioner Gary, who mentioned that, or maybe it was Justin. But building the population density downtown, I mean, you know, I am definitely a stakeholder as far as banking on downtown and what we need downtown. And I'm all for population density. This is not the only developable lot in downtown Sioux St. Marie. I think that once this comes, you know, you may see the Templeton Lot go next, and that's a prime candidate for market-rate housing. Are you gonna be able to build market-rate housing, you know, between a laundromat and an alley and such as opposed to, say, right there on Portage Avenue? I don't know. That's not really for me to judge, actually. It's for the people who have the money. If any of us here says, "Well, we need to build market-rate housing, et cetera," then, you know, go out and get yourself $9 million and do it if you think, if you think that's what we need and if that's the way it's gonna go. But we have a gentleman here who's got the money, willing to put it up, willing to raise the standard of living in this town for, as Commissioner Gary said, 52% of the people who live here. So I am actually, I would make a motion really that we adopt the ordinance, the pilot ordinance as it stands before us tonight.
Support.
And the municipal services agreement as presented.
Support. Okay, now, there are, there are four, four recommendations, or four separate motions? Or there's? Yeah, three. There's three. So there'll be three separate motions.
Or just roll two and three together?
Well, let's, let the city attorney, Attorney Matt.
He told me to do it.
Mr. Bauer? I'm running the meeting.
The motion covers all three.
One, okay, one motion covers all three, according to the city attorney. So we have a motion on the floor and support discussion. Thank you. Mr. Bauer. Anyone over here at this point? I know I'm looking at the same. They've already had their opportunity. We'll go back that way, but, okay. Let me, let me speak at this point, since we've gone around the room a bit. And I guess the, we've talked about this, and the need for market rate units, I think, is, is something that we all share that, that is needed in this community. Affordable situation, being involved in that for a lot of years with, while I was at Community Action, you see the ability to lift people and get them a better way of life with affordable housing. And there's no question that once you get a home or you feel pretty good about yourself, things change in your, sometimes in your character or, or situation, and all of a sudden you're now able to, to make a living and provide for your family, that kind of thing. We have 60 some, 600 and some affordable units, according to our Public Housing Director, Lynda. And I would hate to see people going from emptying out one unit and going to another unit if that, if that happened to be the case, because it's brand new. And everybody likes to live in brand new. But at the same point, and we've talked about, you know, the, another issue would be, you know, we have identified where the rental housing is in the city. I think it's, it's hard to turn down $9 to $11 million, that, what that can do to a community. I know when we had Westbridge, was a homeless, near homeless group for 24 units on Portage Avenue, the first development there. The next development to move in was Freiter View. And when you look at Freiter View and the, and the millions of dollars that that happened, and that was, I mean, that was a tremendous thing for this community. So it did, it did provide the impetus to additional type of, of units in, in the area. It's a hard, it's a hard decision that we're gonna have, because ultimately, we're moving very quick. And I have no problem with waiting until a fall submission. My, I guess my question, and I want to be real honest, Craig, and I think you're an honest person. The likelihood of you being funded in this round or the round in, in the fall, doesn't differ a whole lot other than the fact that we have, we have some questions as, as a commission, I think, on what that would mean to the total community. And I think we want to be careful when we make the decision. And as folks have said, the diligence, the due diligence on our part, I think, is, is more important than ever before. Because we're at a point, and we, we as a commission talked about that, and that's why we had the market rate unit done several years ago, was because we wanted to look at what was needed in this community. And overwhelmingly, the unit, the need was, as we understood it, was market rate units. Now, you could afford others in the affordable housing situation, but the real need was market rate units. And sure enough, we have, you know, we have 12 units maybe coming online with the, the facade program. We have other people, two, two entities looking at market rate units. So, so it's starting to perk. We don't wanna, as a commission, looking, others, others looking at us making, not to be friendly as a community that says yes. So I, I think, I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of strength in, in both arenas type of things. So Craig, if you could at least, for the record, what's, what's the likelihood that you could get funding again in the fall if we backed it up so that we could get more information?
Well, you're never certain because you don't know what your company...
I mean, you have no money right now. I mean, that's...
No, I mean, if you approved a pilot tonight, it is contingent on the fact that we would get funded. If we never get funded because we're not competitive, then nothing happens. We may come back in October and ask you again. In October, you might say, "Look, we've done a little more work," or you haven't, you know, you, you may change your mind that you wouldn't want to support. Question is, is there a window of opportunity? I think there is a window of opportunity on this round for a couple of reasons. Because of the change in the equity market, a lot of my co-developers, colleagues out there are struggling to figure out how many deals they can bring to MISTDA this upcoming round. There have been changes daily. I mentioned the city manager, that there was a change last week that may allow us to strengthen this deal, but it's still fuzzy. We still have two weeks to try to strengthen the deal, to make it, to bring more sourcing, more amenities, to make it stronger in the competitive marketplace. Justin, right now, has the opportunity to improve our walk score, which if we get the improved walk score, I think we can win this round. Now, I don't know about next round, because with the, the equity market, you know, it may be more difficult to get this community funded. But we know right now what we think we can do, and that's all I can say. It's a tough decision. You've been successful drawing Myers in with a lot of workers who are gonna need housing or may have salaries to support this. There's a lot to consider here. It's an opportunity to stimulate other growth. I'm encouraged what Justin said, about 12 more. Two with ours is 14, and others that are thinking. What has been said about light tech, low to moderate beachhead-ing a community is true. It's happened in other communities. Once something happens that's substantive, other players come.
Thank you.
Anything else?
The, for a single person to be eligible, what's the, the hourly wage that, if a person makes minimum wage, are they eligible for your development?
Well, they could be if they qualify, and at, there are certain levels of income bands that, that we, but yes, a minimum wage could. But a single person making up over $22,000, $23,000 could as a single too, so.
And if there's 20, there's 2,080 hours in a full-time year.
Right.
A person making $10 an hour is at 20 grand. So if you're at $15 an hour, you're gonna be over income.
Well, if you, depending, depending on how many, how, how many are in the household, I mean, I think it, it all is based on number of households.
Okay.
But the key one to remember is 36.3 is the upper limit.
Yes. And that's, that's not much.
It's not much, but as I mentioned earlier, what is it, 52% or below 34?
Yeah, I understand. I understand. Okay, let's have some more discussion. Thank you, Craig. Commissioner O'Shaughnessy.
I guess this would be a question for you as well, Craig. What would be the timeline if you, you need to say you have your May submission or mails? If you needed a nod from the city of Sioux St. Marie, when would be the timeline that you would need that from us?
Well, my submission date is April 3rd.
April 3rd? So could we possibly get together and do a work session before that time to, so we just get a little bit more information, talk about, is that something that would be possible to do?
I think it's up to the city attorney in terms of when the adopt, when the ordinance would be adopted.
City, I'll just ask the city manager.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. Based on the fact that once an ordinance is adopted, it requires 10 days to be enacted. It's my understanding that for the application, the ordinance must be enacted. If there was a work session that were to be scheduled, then it would not be able, the application would not be able to be submitted for the April 3rd deadline. It would necessitate a fall submission.
Okay. I just, I just think, and then again, I'm, I'm torn on this as well, and which way to vote on this. I'm, like, then again, everybody else has said, there's good arguments on either side. Our goal is to develop the downtown. I agree with Commissioner Gary with that, and Commissioner Bauer as well. Who else is gonna come in and build in between the laundromat and across from the Salvation Army? You know, you're not gonna bring in market rate and mails. So if we pass up this opportunity for somebody to come develop this, how long will we be waiting for another entity like WODA to come in here and, and actually take action to build on that property? With the timeline that we're looking at, I would, I would agree with Commissioner Bauer to, to vote on this, the city.
Yeah, the motion is there, so. Okay. And there's support. Commissioner, Commissioner Torri.
Thank you. Well, thank you for coming back to me, because I didn't really get any of my questions answered. And one of, this is why I want to have a work session. I have so many questions. And I'm not saying I want to deny the project either. But I, I don't know if you caught that I said, one of the reasons I think that we have 52% low to moderate income in the city of Sioux St. Marie is because we haven't provided any housing for the other people to live. And so, but I'm not saying I want to deny the project. I did see, though, that on the project, there's a couple of things, because originally, it says in our memorandum that there would be between 2,000 and 3,200 in commercial square footage. And I know that when they went to the zoning board of appeals, it was 1,900 for commercial. So that's one of the things that kind of, that frustrates me, because that's been almost cut in half. And then another thing that you have to remember too is that the payment in lieu of taxes, the 3% is based on 93% occupancy rate. And so if you, if they're only 50% full, you're not getting payment on those empty units. And so another thing that I'm, I'm concerned about is there's quite a few three-bedroom units within the development. And you keep saying for a maximum annual salary of, for up to four, who's gonna be living in the third bedroom? Because according to MISTDA, it's two people per bedroom.
Craig, you, you can come back if you'd like to.
The way MISTDA counts is based on heartbeats and gender, et cetera, in a three-bedroom, technically. If you had a single, single person, you could, you could still, single parents, you could conceptually have five individuals in there, in a three-bedroom. So generally, a family that, in a two-bedroom, could have a husband and wife or whatever the mix is there. And then they could have, you know, two children in the other, the other bedroom. So I mean, it varies, and so...
But, but you said for a family of up to four.
Well, because a family up to four is generally, you know, it's generally in a...
So is it a family of up to six, or is it a family of up to four?
Well, it depends on who comes through the door and who applies. But theoretically, in a three-bedroom, you could have six in that...
You would have, well, you would have to have more than four, because the MISTDA requirements are that it's two people per bedroom, so you...
So, I mean, the more there are, the more income they can earn.
Not, I mean, but see, these are a lot of the questions that I'm concerned with. I'm also concerned with what is the breakdown? And I know that when you're looking at the low-income tax brackets, you're looking at 30, 40, 50, and 60% rental rates. Now, if you're, if you're on the higher end, 60%, that is not cheap rate. It's a not-cheap rent. It's very, it's very expensive. $650 upwards to $700 is almost market rate in Sioux St. Marie. And then it, but it's, but it's considered low income for a family who is low income. So is, are people spending that much money? Is there 65 units' worth of people that would spend that amount of money or could afford to spend that amount of money on an apartment that would qualify them for low income?
Well, let me answer it a couple ways. So first of all, the market study that I alluded to, which was the snapshot, really looked at all the income bands and, and the absorption rates and, and the fact that there is enough market capacity in the PMA to add on another 57 units, because the market study was predicated on a 57 and a seven market rate. That's what I, I want to be clear on that, this one. But within days, I'm surprised we don't have a, the full market study is gonna be out from MISTDA, which will give all this detail about this thick of a full-blown market study. Now, based on this, we have confidence there's enough market. Now, I don't know, you know, we have 12 units that are three-bedroom. We have 10, we have 10 units that are one-bedroom, the 43, I think, is the rest, somewhere in that range is the two-bedroom. So based on that, we, we believe that there are enough families... So based on that, we, we believe that there are enough families, and that, that the incomes are such that can support that. There is no subsidy on this property. Somebody mentioned 52 units of vouchers. There are no vouchers that are tied to this property. So everybody works and everybody stands on their own two feet. Your comment, I need to address the 1980 versus the 3,200. The zoning board of appeals, we had to fit the units in to get to our 65, and then when it all finalized out, we took to them 1980. It was not a bait and switch. It was just the reality of the way the commercial worked out. And, once again, that commercial and the two market rates will be taxed at the ad valorem rate. So, I think I got to all your questions, but I may have missed one.
Pretty much. I'm, I'm also concerned about, and this is why I wanted to have a commission work session, again. I'm also concerned about the fact that you said that seniors over the age of 55 would be able to apply. Now, I'm, I'm very concerned about putting seniors on the same floor as families, because I know that, for example, like Bridge Village has a completely different, separate building for their seniors.
Sure, I'm familiar with that property.
And, okay. So what is your plan for this property? Are you going to be separating out?
Well, as I know about Bridge Village, Bridge Village went in multi-phases, and that's why there's a distinctive senior portion. It has nothing to do with the demographic challenges. Way, throughout this state, throughout, I mean, down just 50 miles south, in, in, in St. Ignis, we have a 40-unit that is the same way as we propose, and that's an RD 515 property, it's been around about 30 years, and we rehabbed it five years, or six years ago. We have no issues with the compatibility. It's common throughout the state. Our big Brookside Commons with, which RD attended, 72 units, seniors and families. In fact, there are those who believe that the blending is best for families, and it's best for seniors, because seniors like children, families like seniors, so it's kind of...
Not in living.
Well, not all, I know.
Yeah.
I've seen some grumpy old men and women, so.
So those are just part of the, some of the things that I've, I've really been tossing around. I'm also, and, and I know that a lot of times, WODA Group brings in a property management company, which also helps you in, with your score, and it helps the, the approval rating a lot better. And how many, how many properties does WODA Group actually manage themselves?
We have a portfolio of over 10,000 units, 250 developments in 13 states. Now, in this state, about six years ago, MISTHA decided that they wanted to honor the hometown companies, and so they had special points. We, in the UP, all of our UP properties are, because of the timing when they went to application, all the UP properties, I believe there could be one that isn't, but all of them are under a third party. Everything down south of the bridge is totally, of which is about 20 of our properties.
So you do manage.
So that we do manage. Our, the property management team that's handling our UP, I'm, I like them a lot, because the senior person who works there at KMG. But, this property will be managed by WODA, because we no longer have those requirements under scoring.
And then, just another thing, just for the commission, that I am concerned with is, is the migration aspect from the current to the new? And what are we going to be doing to our other properties within city limits, where they're going to be losing their renters, so that people can go to the new? I'm not too concerned that we're going to be bringing all these new people in, because we know for a fact that Meyer only imported the top 30 jobs, and the rest of the people were hired from within the community. So people were already living here, so we're not having to provide places for Meyer employees to live. But just, just a lot of the things that I've been tossing around, and that's why I thought it would be great for us to get together and talk, but.
Just one more comment, if I may, because it does get to the Meyer comments you made, and I didn't know how many, but I know a lot of those jobs will be part or full-time at the lower end. I do know this, that in so many of our northern communities, so many of the workers who are trying to work in downtowns like this, whether it be this, Potoski, Alpena, Traverse City, whatever, commute long, long distances. And that burden of transportation, the cost of, is something that all communities need to think about, because these are the people who service daily in our downtowns, or in our communities, at the hospitals, the banks, whatever. The other part of this is, that entrepreneurs like you, maybe you don't have this, because I think last time we met, you talked about a higher wage rate. But some of the entrepreneurs in these downtowns are, are relying on $10 to $12, $8, $9, and these people are driving from wherever, and they're not showing up because of ice, or snow, or car breakdown, whatever. This is an important decision that you make. I appreciate the opportunity to share this. A work session will delay our chance to get funded.
Thank you, Greg. You done, Ken? Commissioner Lynn?
I know we're probably getting close to voting.
Hmm.
Okay. And I'm going to bring this up, Justin. I'm going to break it, and I'm going to talk about the lock job, okay? Let's say the lock job happens, okay? These are very well-paid, and I mentioned this in the work session. These are very well-paid construction jobs, management jobs, very well-paid. You tell me where they're going to live in Sault Ste. Marie, right now. Where are they going to live?
They're not.
They're not? Because we've got, what, 600 and some units of subsidized housing, not enough market-rated housing. Maybe they'll buy trailers, and, maybe they'll put a trailer in off the Riverside Trailer Park, how would that be? Or something like that. But that's something that we've got to be concerned about, and that's why we've got to somehow get market-rated housing in this community.
Mr. Gage.
One of the things I, I find the most exciting about this project is that after we talked about it last week, the, the downtown development authority was then approached by another group, and they, they expressed some interest in, in also putting in some money and building some market-ready apartments. I think that, that, I'm hoping that by having this discussion, we are showing that we're doing our due diligence and having a discussion. In some respects, we just had a work session, you know, right now. And I, and I think that we have done our due diligence. I would like to see that, that study. I don't think I'm going to vote against this without seeing it. It's, it's, it's hard, I think, for us to, to determine what type of, what type of development, what type of growth we will approve, and which type we won't. You know, that's, that's a very good point, in that, that this person is coming and asking us for an incentive that might be used if the project is approved, and if, if the funding comes in. If it's not, then, then they won't, and we walk away, status quo. And we have to decide whether or not to use that incentive. And if that incentive brings $9 million worth of investment into Meloni's Alley, at the end of the day, I have no problem with it, so. That's my two cents. I appreciate everybody's discussion on this. It really helped.
Okay, anyone else? The, would you, the motion is to approve, you have it there, Jen?
Um, however, it's the title ordinance, and then you have to motion out all three.
Yes, so the motion is to approve the payment in lieu of tax ordinance, and all the two, three, and four recommendations alongside that, at this point. Final discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
No.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
No.
Mayor Baspas?
No. Motion carried 4-3. Okay. Okay, moving on. Good luck, Greg. You bet.
Can we go to the bathroom?
Can you go to the bathroom? No, we're going to move on. You just kidding?
Just kidding.
Okay. Okay. Item number B.
Item B, revocation of the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption, exemption certificate. A is public comments and action on the item.
Okay, thank you. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 3rd, 2002, following a public hearing, the Sault Ste. Marie City Commission established an obsolete property rehabilitation district within the downtown area of Sault Ste. Marie. This district was formed in recognition of the unique problems in the redevelopment of older buildings in downtown areas, in accordance with Public Act 146 of 2000. Subsequently, an application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate was received by the city from Dr. Ganshorn in late 2008. The application for the exemption certificate was for a proposed use of the former Clermont Building to serve as the base for new medical offices in downtown Sault Ste. Marie. At the time, it was recognized that in order for the certificate to be valid, the developer had to follow through with the construction of 36,000 square feet of medical office space, utilizing the Clermont Building and a footprint equal to, or less than, the Clermont Building for a new addition to that structure. Following a public hearing at which no comments from the public were received, the city commission then took action at its January 19th, 2009 regular meeting to grant an obsolete property rehabilitation act exemption for real property located within the district, and for the property at 146 Ridge Street for a period of 12 years, beginning December 31st, 2009. As granted, the exemption certificate froze the 2009 tax year taxable value of $80,500 for 146 Ridge Street, not including the land, at the then-current level prior to the proposed improvements, which were expected to approximately, approximate $4.2 million. Following the granting of this certificate, the property at 146 Ridge Street was then sold. As commissioners are aware, these improvements have not progressed, and the previously issued obsolete property rehabilit, rehabilitation exemption certificate should be revoked. Right now, it would be appropriate for that obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate to be revoked, regardless of whether the payment in lieu of taxes ordinance is moved forward if MISTHA approves the Osborne Commons project. And in accordance with Public Act 146 of 2000, a public hearing must be held to provide for the revocation of the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate. Required notices and publications for this public hearing have been issued, and the included resolution has been modeled on language that the state tax commission requires for the revocation of such exemption certificates. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the city commission first hold a duly-scheduled public hearing on the revocation of the exemption certificate number 3-09-001, and secondarily adopt the included resolution for the revocation of that exemption certificate. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll hold the public hearing on the revocation of the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate as explained by the city manager. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment at this time? Okay, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. City commission.
So move to the city manager's recommendation.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item four, under communications, from the Superior District Library, request for support of the addition of the Detour Library to Superior District Library.
Okay, thank you. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my understanding that the District Library Board Vice President, Mr. Schaefer, is here tonight to address the city commission.
Evening, John.
Good evening.
Did it do it in three minutes?
Yep.
Tax-free zone, something? Okay, the Detour Public Library has approached the Superior District Library, and would like to join to become the ninth affiliate library of the district. They're currently being funded through a quarter mil tax levy of the residents, as well as approximately $30,000 from the Detour Area School District. The school district can no longer support the library, so they're asking to join the Superior District Library, so they can remain open. The library serves as both a school library and a public library. The Detour Friends of the library have been running the millage and doing fundraising to help supplement the library's hours, but they will not be able to raise all of the monies needed to keep the library's door open, once the school withdraws its funding. They've agreed to put an increase in millage from a quarter mil to half a mil, for a term to match the current Superior District Library's millage, which will expire in 2025. With the increase in the millage, fundraising by the Friends of the library, the penal fines, and the additional state aid funding, the Superior District Library will be able to so, support the Detour Library without any strain on their current budget. So it'll be revenue neutral. In addition to the financial considerations, the Detour Library is the only public library currently in Chippewa County that's not a part of the Superior District Library. So it makes sense, from both a financial and a geographic point of view, to add them to the district in order to keep them open, and to continue providing the school and public library service to the Detour Area residents and schoolchildren. According to the Superior District Library agreement, in order for the library to join the district, there needs to be a two-thirds majority vote between the governing entities that make up the district. These are the Mackinac County Board, the Chippewa County Board, and the Sault Ste. Marie City Council, and the Superior District Library Board of Trustees. The Superior District Library Board voted at their February 23rd board meeting to approve the addition of the Detour Library to the district. Contingent upon the millage being passed in November 2017, we're now seeking approval from the other government entities to add the Detour Library to the district. Therefore, the Board of Trustees of the Superior District Library ask that the city of Sault Ste. Marie approve the addition of the Detour Public Library to the Superior, to the Superior District Library.
Okay, thank, thank you, John. City manager.
Uh, nothing further to add. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner, Mr. Twardy.
Yeah. So move the city manager's recommendation. Happy to have them. Detoured Library is actually really cute, and I think they'll be great. It's good for them to join us. Thank you, John.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Is that, is that a recommendation from the city manager?
Uh, thank you. Actually, my, my recommendation would be to support the request of Superior District Library.
I figured that.
Yeah, I just, I just, I wanted to hear from the big guy, you know what I mean?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, there was no recommendation here, but you're supporting the...
Uh, that is correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Like you said, the mayor's, the manager's recommendation. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Good luck, John.
Item B, under communications, from Neil Jorgensen, request to reconsider city commission action to condemn 606 Eureka Street and 629 Magazine Street.
Okay, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. City administration has been contacted by Mr. Neil Jorgensen by way of a letter dated March 7th, 2017, included with this item, requesting that the city commission reconsider its decision to condemn 606 Eureka Street and 629 Magazine Street, which was rendered at the January 3rd city commission meeting. In exchange for a favorable reconsideration, and a five-month timeline to repair exterior issues at both addresses, Mr. Jorgensen states he would put forth a bond in the amount of $20,000. A further five months would be requested to complete interior work after exterior repairs have been completed. Mr. Jorgensen is presently out of town and unavailable to attend the meeting. As such, Mr. Ken Rundell will be in attendance to address the city commission on his behalf. In further developments on this topic, after discussions with Chippewa County Administration, the county commission has agreed to deed both 606 Eureka and 629 Magazine over to the city at no cost, should the state of Michigan waive its first right of refusal. Although the county is not in a position to participate in sharing with demolition costs, the transfer of these properties to the city will result in the county foregoing approximately $8,500 to $9,000 in tax recovery funds, which would have been made available otherwise. City administration appreciates the county's assistance in bringing this to a resolution, should it become necessary for the city to demolish these structures. It should also be noted that the city currently maintains a local site remediation revolving fund that currently receives monies from previous brownfield projects. This fund is expected to maintain a balance of $136,293 as of June 30th, 2017. This fund is expected to maintain a balance of $136,293 as of June 30th, 2017, and those funds can be used to support the demolition of the structures at 606 Eureka and 629 Magazine. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the City Commission take no action and that it not reconsider its previous actions relating to 606 Eureka and 629 Magazine. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rundell, you have about three minutes to talk to the Commission. If you'd identify yourself, we'd appreciate it.
How you all doing tonight?
Good. Could you identify yourself, just for the...
My name's Ken Rundell.
Thank you.
A little nervous since you told me I'm on television now.
Your three minutes has started, so...
Trust me, everybody went to sleep.
All I can say is that if I can get some of you to go on and learn with me, I promise you, I will not let you down. You know, we will make you all happy if just enough of you would come our way. This was, I don't know, kind of weak in faith for me right now. I kind of had given up on it, but some things happened, and here I am again. So I don't know if you guys, how you guys are feeling about this, but I promise you, we will not let you down again. And all the things that's ever happened on this before, I don't know why I'm looking at you, man.
She's pretty.
Yeah, that too. But I know we had a lot of problems with the neighbors being upset with everything, and really, they had every right to be. And like I said, we were kind of a little slow to get going with this. This is a whole learning experience for us, especially for Mr. Jorgensen and myself. So we kind of know, we're trying to think if we're going to be on the same page as you, if you guys reconsider us. And like I said, we're willing to go on and win. If I can get some of you, enough of you, obviously, I think you guys got to vote on it. If I get enough of you, hopefully, it's not too weak, strong enough to hold all of us, that, you know, we can, you know, pull together and maybe make something good out of this, out of something that's bad. I would say I'd like to save this old house from demolition. I've always really loved Victorian houses, always wanted to have one. I'd be ashamed. Sioux-St. Marie has a lot of them in this house, obviously, a lot of them in this town. Obviously, one probably wouldn't visit, but, you know, it's still one house that maybe might make a difference in the community. If you guys would help us do it. I guess that's all I got to say. Thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you. Thank you. In order for the, in order for the Commission to talk about this, there would have to be a reconsideration motion. If not, then it would stand as the City Manager's recommendation? Commissioner Osterhout?
I'd like to make a motion that would support the City Manager's recommendation.
Commissioner Gary? Just, well, not if it's not to be reconsidered, because they would have a chance.
If you're not going to reconsider, I'd like to speak if there's something going on.
Well, you can, you can speak now if you'd like, because you're, you're trying to convince us to reconsider. Good job. If you would identify yourself also, Eric, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Eric Markin. At present, I am the listed owner of the property. The last couple of years, as I said before, I've had health issues, that things have gotten away from me. I think there's a chance for this property to be redeemed. I don't plan to be involved with it once it is fixed up. Right now, I'm the nominal owner. I was trying to get my nephew involved with this a couple of years back, and the result with that was he got thrown in jail. So I think partly Neil's afraid to put it in his name, for fear of something happening to him. So I guess I'm the scapegoat in that department right now, but my plan is to, if they get this fixed up, I want to be out of it. I would have probably tried to do something when the condemnation came through, but at that point, there was nobody else who was willing to buy it or help me or anything, except for when Neil stepped up after my nephew was unable to continue. I think the property could be an asset to the city. I mean, you may have funds to tear it down, but then you end up with an empty lot, which is not going to be bringing in much money. And you're talking about housing in the Sioux. I mean, this is only maybe one house, but if they could fix it up, it could be available for somebody that wanted a, that would be a nicer place to live, that somebody could take advantage of. And like I said, I think it would be a lot better than having a vacant lot there, and I would feel better about the resolution of things. I wouldn't be, like I say, involved with things afterwards, but I had this property a number of years, I became attached to it, I wouldn't like to drive by and see the vacant lot. But about 30 years or so ago, that situation happened to me with another property, and every time I drive by that one, I feel some sadness about it, that it couldn't have been rehabbed, and I think it could have, but at that point, there was no dealing with any cooperation or anything, and I didn't have anybody like Neil able to step in and offer to help with this thing. And I think it would look good for the city in the long run if this property gets back up and running, and if Neil puts up a bond and doesn't follow through on it, you haven't lost anything, you've gained. There's also the matter of, I don't know, you'd be losing out on these past due property taxes that I wasn't able to pay, that those would have to be paid up by him, and that would be another asset to the city. And as I say, in the future, the taxes on the vacant lot would not be much going forward. If it was a house fixed up again, the taxes would be quite more substantial. I know there's some people out there that, I'm not their favorite person, but like I say, I'm basically out of this. I'm in it right now, basically, just because I'm the one that was the owner, and I'm sort of the one that's up there. If they want to try to throw someone in jail or anything, it's going to be me. So hopefully, I won't come to that either.
Mr. Markin?
I was in jail once for a whole month because I didn't put a new roof on the one house, and my contractor said I didn't need a new roof. The roof didn't leak, but I think I hit Judge McDonald on a bad day.
Mr. Markin, three minutes?
My...
Well, you're kind of past it, so if you'd just like to wrap it up, we'd appreciate it.
Well, that's about all I have to say. I'm hoping that anybody has any animosity toward me, they could put that aside and look at the long-term on this, as far as what's best for the city and for everybody. The people that live in the neighborhood, I want to assure them, I will not be involved in this as far as who lives there or anything. We get it fixed up, any one of them would be welcome to buy the place, and then they would have it to do something with. But like I said, I think it would be an asset to the city to keep this property as a property, not just a vacant lot.
Okay.
That's what I have to say.
Thank you. I can, I can assure you that the Commission has no animosity toward you. Thank you. Okay, so we'll hold, that, I guess that takes care of the public comment at this point. We have a motion on the floor in support. Comments? Commissioner Gage?
Mr. Mayor, in the words of Ronald Reagan, "Tear down this house."
Commissioner Bauer?
I'm sorry, I didn't think that this motion was necessary, that if we just don't act on it...
That is also correct, in my mind.
I don't know that we, unless Commissioner Gage just seconded it, I don't think, we have a second, I don't think we need it, and I think we can move on.
Unless you want to reaffirm that. At this point, there is a motion, and there is support, so we can deal with the motion, I guess. We wouldn't have to, but it's there, so... Okay. Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Full same sign? Motion carried.
I hate to bring this up, but how quickly can we move on tearing these two homes down?
City Manager.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. This would go through the process of reverting to the county, at which point it would be offered to the state. Presumably, the state will decline this assumption of the properties, at which point the city would be able to receive them. It would have to go through several due diligence phases prior to taking the actions to demolish the structures.
You've got to go off for bed.
So, have to go off for...
Probably this summer.
This summer, then.
And that's what we're looking for, late this summer.
Okay. Okay, item number five is the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, under the City Manager's report, would provide for the acceptance for the 2017 residential spring cleanup. For the past several years, the City Commission has appropriated $25,000 to provide a spring cleanup voucher program. Two proposals were received by the City Clerk's Office on March 1st for providing this service in 2017, with the proposals coming from Smith Sanitation and Waste Management. Smith Sanitation's proposal is for their facility located on West M28. Waste Management provided two proposals in their response, one at the transfer station in Sioux-St. Marie, and the other at the Dafter landfill on 12 Mile Road. In reviewing the bids, Smith Sanitation would charge $10 for the first 350 pounds and 2 and 1/2 cents per pound for anything over 350 pounds. Waste Management would charge 15 for the first 500 pounds, with a cost per pound exceeding 500 pounds at 2.6 cents, or $20 for the first 500 pounds, and 3.6 cents per pound for the transfer station option. Upon review of the proposals, it is City Administration's recommendation that the bid be awarded to Waste Management due to its close proximity of the local transfer station in Sioux-St. Marie and convenience for the residents. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the City Commission authorize the spring cleanup voucher program, providing 1,000 vouchers at a face value of $25 per voucher for use by property owners for the spring cleanup program that would run from April 10th through June 30th, and that the City Commission accept the proposal from Waste Management of Sioux-St. Marie for its, oh, for its, I'm sorry. For its residential spring cleanup voucher program, excuse me, as submitted in its request for proposals, with the city paying $20 for the price 500 pounds and 3.6 cents per pound for refuse in excess of 500 pounds. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. City Commission. Commissioner Twardy?
Since there is a recommendation, I move that the...
There are two recommendations, and talking with the city attorney, that could be one motion.
Okay, perfect. So then I'll just move the City Manager's recommendation. Thank you.
It's been moved, support. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And that also is a change, because now you would be bringing your, all your materials and stuff to the transfer station, instead of going, and people will, don't know that, beyond the voucher. Okay. Thank you.
Item B, under City Manager's report, would provide for the award of a bid for self-contained breathing apparatus on this matter Fire Chief Lavanti is planning to present to the City Commission.
All right. Evening, Chief.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As the Commission may be aware, in 2006, 18 SCBA units, along with 18 spare bottles and face pieces, were purchased with funds from a Homeland Security grant. These air packs have served our fire department extremely well on emergency scenes and many, many training evolutions. On Friday, March 10th, at 4:00 p.m., two sealed bids were received for replacement of SCBA for the fire department. Both proposals met or exceeded the bid specifications provided for the department, with two of the bids coming in both under budgeted amounts. The budget amount was $39,000. Argus Hasco of Chesterfield, Michigan, came in at $36,180, and Westshore Fire of Allendale, Michigan, came in at $37,524. After 10 years, 10-plus years now, of using these specific air packs, the firefighters have grown very accustomed to a very specific type, and we've been using Scott air packs now for, like I mentioned, 11 years. To go to a different type, different style air pack would cause some compatibility issues with the air packs that we have now, and we'd have to do an enormous amount of retraining to get the staff back up to a level where they'd be proficient, where they should be with a different brand, if we were to do that. So switching to a different brand or a different type of air pack definitely wouldn't be a good idea. According to the manufacturer, and every manufacturer is the same, they all recommend a 10-year replacement, so that's the schedule that we're on. SCBA or self-contained breathing apparatus are an extremely vital piece of gear for a firefighter. With all the nasty gases and hot air that are present in fires, obviously, the firefighters can't breathe in this environment. So this is a very beneficial, very important piece of apparatus, a piece of equipment that must be relied upon for our firefighters' lives. So with the lowest bid coming in at $36,180, it's been recommended to entertain that option.
City Manager, anything additional?
Just a note for clarity. Thank you for that presentation, Chief. Within the fiscal effects, it does mention a budget of $19,500. That's for two separate fiscal years in that amount, so the total available funding would be $39,000.
So your recommendation is...
Thank you, Mayor. My recommendation is to award the bid to the lowest bidder, meaning specs.
Thank you. Commissioner Gary?
I'd make a motion to accept the City Manager's recommendation.
Support.
It's been moved, support. Are there any additional questions?
The Chief's going to showcase this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can show you the pieces here real quick, just so you know what we're dealing with. This is a complete piece of the equipment that I have in my hands, and I'll try and show it so everybody can see. Again, we'll be buying six of these pieces, and what we're seeing here, this would be the face piece, the piece that the firefighter wears, and it's connected to this apparatus by a regulator. Obviously, the cylinder here is the piece that carries the compressed air. Basically, it's just filtered air, the same type of air that you breathe here. For what it's worth, this carries 30 minutes' worth of air at 4,500 PSI. It's an aluminum bottle that's wrapped in a carbon fiber. And then the last piece that remains would be the backpack apparatus, in which this is what the firefighter wears on the back. And I just want to bring to your attention some of the discoloration of some of these straps. None of what you see is due to ill-use. By that, I mean, the firefighters take very good care of this equipment, and some of the discoloration is just due to heat exposure. Some of this is designed to change color, temperatures between 800 and 1,000 degrees, so you can just imagine the atmosphere that these guys are in. So the discoloration on the tank that you see here, some of these devices have been used like battering rams to get out of hazardous situations. So again, you know, we're taking very good care of this equipment, it's just how it looks. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Great, we have a motion in support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item C, under City Manager's report, would provide for the award of a contract for sewer televising, on the city engineer Basista is planning to present to the City Commission.
Evening, London.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. On March 9th, we opened bids for sewer televising, for sewers along the I-75 Business Borough, and we received three bids in response to our advertisement for bids. They were from the Taplin Group of Kalamazoo, Tunnel Vision from Escanaba, and Greenscape from Lake Michigan. And a low bidder was Taplin Group of $23,855.13. While this specific contract for televising of sewers is specifically for, in preparation of the I-75 Business Borough reconstruction project, it's also part of the SAW program, where we're doing the condition assessment of our sewers and our manholes and mapping our system. So with that, this contract will be paid for under our SAW grant, but at this time... this time, we're bringing this contract forward in order to get this done ahead of the design for the I-75 Business Spur. So if any sewers need rehab or replacement during the I-75 reconstruction project, we'll be able to include it in with that project. So the recommendation is to award a contract to Taplin Group of Kalamazoo for $23,855.13. And I would just add, as a status update, the I-75 Business Spur, MDAT is doing the design of the project. We had base plan review meeting about a month ago. In about another month, MDAT will be ready to start planning public information meetings whereby we probably will have a few for, you know, businesses and residents, general public and the like. The project is to, a total reconstruct of the spur from the northbound ramps to 10th Avenue. And 10th Avenue is where the spur was reconstructed back in 2011, or 12. So it's total reconstruction. And then also, of course, the roundabout at the intersection of Mackinac Trail, 3 Mile Road and the spur.
Any questions? Let's go to the city manager first for a wrap-up. Any additional information?
Thank you for that presentation, City Engineer. And just a reminder, as mentioned at the last meeting, due to Engineering's application for safety funding, there were $284,600 in grant funds obtained to help offset a portion of the $500,000 that the city has been setting aside for the roundabout portion of that. And that's a 9/10 with a 10% match on that grant.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Bauer?
So move that the commission award the contract for sewer televising in the amount of $23,855.13 to the Taplin Group as the lowest responsive bidder.
Support.
Moved, supported. Questions? Commissioner Torri?
Just more of a comment. I love the SAW grant stuff. Just, I don't know, maybe I should have been a civil engineer. I just think it's really cool to be able to look at what's going on underneath your streets without having to dig them up. And as you guys know, my son did SAW grant projects around the Lansing area and then Escanaba, and he was up in Gokebit County last summer. And this is why the SAW grant is so important, because one of the manholes that he took the cover off and was looking in, there was a pipe there that was not on his blueprint, should not have been there. So after taking many pictures, he immediately called the city and they sent somebody out to take a look at it. And it was, what they thought was an old abandoned pipe was not abandoned. And it was slowly, not rapidly, but it was slowly leaking raw sewage into their water system. So at that moment, he felt like superstar because he was able to, I mean, he didn't just go, "Oh, there's a pipe. Oh, well, let's just leave it there." He actually went through and he followed through and, you know, he was able to provide cleaner water for parts of Gokebit County. So I think that that's why the SAW grant is so cool and it's very important.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? We have motion in support. Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item D, under the city manager's report, would provide for the approval of a proposal from Rowan Salvage Company for the installation of mooring clusters. On this matter, City Engineer Basista is planning to provide brief background to the city commission.
Okay.
Brief?
Again.
Okay. So as you are aware, based, due to the condition of the carbide dock and the proposed 12 ships planned to be, cruise ships planning to come to the Sioux this summer, city administration has been looking at new mooring locations for docking the cruise ships. And the one location that we've been exploring is the Valley Camp Dock. And while the dock is there, it does not have all of the necessary pertinences to dock a cruise ship. The cruise ships are run, you know, just over 300 feet, 326 feet are the two ships that are planning to dock here. And so as a result, we are in need of placing possibly two pile clusters for assisting with the docking. And if Bonnie could go to the document camera, I have... I think if you zoom in, just down the... I'll get up here so I can see. So the proposal is to dock a cruise ship. And if you can see in the illustration, the yellow is outline of what the cruise ship would, where the cruise ship would dock. And here is the Camp Marina boardwalk. Here's the Valley Camp. And then this is the Valley Camp. Here is the Valley Camp Ship Store. And there's a wall along here. And then to the, further to the easterly side is the Boat Tours property. So in order to accommodate a cruise ship there, we'd have to be straddling the Valley Camp slip and also extend beyond the, into the boardwalk area. Now, the boardwalk was not designed or built to accommodate docking, whether tying off or laying up against that boardwalk. So we knew we would need to provide something there to assist with the tying off of the ships. And so administration contacted three companies here in the Sioux, two of which are not from the Sioux but are currently here at the carbide, using the carbide dock. That would be Rowan Salvage Company and Ryba Marine. And also, we contacted MCM Marine. And we held interviews, you know, calls with each one to discuss their capabilities of assisting us not only with the installation of what would be necessary to dock the boats, but to also assist with the design. The design would be needed, obviously. I'm not a marine engineer. And, you know, we're talking about big ships. So we, in talking to the companies, we asked what their capabilities were and ideas were for actually docking the ships and then their capabilities for assisting with the design. And Rowan Company actually has, their president is a professional registered engineer and has done design before. And the other two companies, they work with consulting companies but would need to, you know, bring on from outside, design consultant. So it was SAV's recommendation that we go ahead and do a, sort of a design build concept where we work with Rowan Salvage to help with the design and then provide a proposal for the actual installation of the seven pile clusters. The, we, and that, they also provide, he provides, so they provided the recommendation for what size. And the location, actual location of the clusters is, as you see in this, this is the information that I've sent to the cruise ship companies to get an idea of if they could dock with, just using one pile cluster. And here's where the, one of the proposed locations was, right at the corner within the Valley Camp slip. The other one would be, possibility was more towards where the bow of the ship would be. And then they would have to be up more on an angle with their stern up against the wall here. So I've been working with the cruise ship companies to, and they've been giving feedback on whether or not one pile cluster would work. As suspected, one, just one alone is not going to work. So we're going to need two. And that was, is what is in the Rowan Salvage proposal, is to do two pile clusters. There is a picture in your, and when I'm talking about pile cluster, I'll show that to you. I had hoped to limit it to just one because these are not exactly, you know, very pleasing look. It's fine. But the pile cluster would basically look like that. Now, so it sticks above the water elevation so that a ship can tie off to, this would be the mooring bollard. And then there will also be a bumper along the side so where the ship lays up against the pile cluster. So I was hoping we could get away with just one. But it's looking like, after talking to the cruise ships, that companies, that they are going to need to in order to safely dock. And so we're just still hot off the press, working with them. But Rowan Salvage Company does need to know soon, and which is why this is at city commission tonight, for a budget approval so that they can start ordering the material as soon as we know exactly where and how many pile clusters are going to be involved. But pretty sure it's going to be two. And so City Manager Turner will, in his, I think he'll wrap up this report talking about the costs and the budget implications and the financial implications. And we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
Thank you for that presentation, Linda. So just a note that this would be a cooperative partnership with Sioux Historic Sites. We've been working closely with its executive director, Rich Brawley. From an aesthetic standpoint, certainly would be beneficial to bring the cruise ships down into Historic Water Street, which would align with the city's placemaking efforts. From a revenue perspective, the city would plan to charge each vessel that moors $3,000 for security and dockage, assuming that the city commission adopts that change in the fee schedule through the upcoming budget process. And after the paying of a fee to Sioux Historic Sites and the police auxiliary, the city would net approximately $2,090 for each mooring for a total of just over $25,000 in estimated revenue for each season. So at this rate, based on the anticipated expenses of installing two pile clusters, we would be looking at about a four-season period of time during which the costs would be recovered. So if you look at it from the perspective that there are 12 cruise ships for this season, and we may have as many as 15 or 16 cruise ships, what dock manager Robert Brown has been able to determine is that it's logical to assume that there's an economic impact of between $75 and $150 for each passenger on a cruise ship and not including the staff that stats the cruise ship. And this was confirmed by the Great Lakes Cruising Coalition. So with those figures, during a projected four-year payback period, it's estimated that the positive economic impact on the community would range between $450,000 and $750,000, representing either a $5 or $0.25 return on each dollar invested to $8.72 return for each dollar invested over that four-year payback period as a benefit to the local business community. So it's possible that the funds for this project could be drawn from the carbide dock reserves, which the current balance is of that reserve, $638,742. So as noted within the memorandum, that fund is not supplied by tax dollars but rather the user fees that have been accumulated through the use of the carbide dock. And there would be no net effect on the uncommitted fund balance in the general fund, with the overall general fund minimum fund balance would move downward to 20.57% from 21.98% if expenditure were approved. That would still place it over the 15% to 20% range that's provided for within the city's established general fund minimum balance policy. So there'd be a significant amount of work that would need to be accomplished by city administration within the coming weeks to secure the joint permit for the work, continue our consultation with the cruise ship companies, and execute the administrative partnership with Sioux Historic Sites. It should be noted that there, of course, are no guarantees to how many cruise ships would dock each year. However, we're already receiving inquiries from 2018, for 2018 for cruise ship dockings. So on balance, we're anticipating the positive economic impact from these activities, the associated placemaking elements and benefits, and the growth of Sioux St. Marie as a cruising destination would help to recover any expenditures for this work. Certainly, to this date and time, there has been a significant investment of staff time for the city engineer, who's done an excellent job, and our dock manager, Robert Brown, who has really taken his duties to a very high level, and appreciate his work, and of course, our community development director, Kelly Freeman. So I would recommend that first, the city commission accept the proposal from Rowan Salvage Company, and secondarily, authorize a new capital project in the amount, and the memorandum says $82,000, but the information we just received today would prompt me to request that that would be increased to $86,000 to be established and tracked in the capital project fund with funding to come from the carbide dock reserve, which will be transferred out of the general fund to the capital project fund. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Gary has a question.
Since I'm on the Board of Directors for Sioux Historic Sites, with whom we'd be looking to have the arrangement, and all of this work is a precursor to that arrangement, I feel I should abstain from discussion and a vote. Mr. City Attorney?
That'll be fine.
Thank you. Okay. Then Commissioner Gary will not participate in discussion or vote. Just a comment, I think I speak for the commission, the, I think we understand the significance and the importance of the cruise ships. It's been a long time in developing this partnership with the cruise lines, and they're getting more and more acceptance of the city of Sioux St. Marie and the area surrounding and the water. And to have the location that was being proposed now instead of the previous location, which was the carbide dock, is much more pleasing and a lot closer to the downtown area. So these numbers are very encouraging. And it can only go, you know, increase from here. And those are some significant numbers over the next, you know, eight years could be, a ton of people stopping and walking through the downtown area. So this is a great opportunity. With that, Commissioner Gage?
Mr. Mayor, I move the city manager's recommendation.
Support.
The move's supported. There are two recommendations, and in discussion with the city attorney, that's one motion. So we are covered with that. Are there any other discussions? Or questions I should... Roll, Commissioner?
It'd be nice. They can get off the cruise ship right into the Valley Camp. Get off one ship and get onto another.
They could, yes.
I am worried that the cruise ships are gonna block in the Valley Camp, you know. It's a joke.
Moving on, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
In discussion with the mayor, just have a few announcements prior to the city manager's report concluding. I wanted to recognize three employees of the city who have dedicated a long period of time to public service. First, Jason Thorpe, whose last day worked was last Friday. Very pleased with the work that Chief Labanti is doing, and certainly congratulate him on his service, as well as Joan Roney in the Community Development Department, completing almost 20 years with the city. And Street Superintendent Billy Anderson, who has had over 27 years of service to the city. Certainly very important positions and appreciate their dedication and service to the community.
Thank you. And on behalf of the city commission, we certainly wish them well in their retirement.
That concludes the city manager's report. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Item number six is our status reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A under status reports is pertaining to the budget submission and review schedule. Just a reminder that on Monday, April 17th, I will be formally submitting the annual budget to the city commission. There are currently work sessions that have been scheduled for Tuesday, April 18th, starting at 4:15 PM in the commission chambers, as well as, if necessary, April 19th and the 20th. And subsequently after that, on Monday, April 24th, at 4:00 PM, the city commission will hold a special meeting to reconcile the proposed budget. Certainly, we're looking forward to former city commissioner Bill Munsel's participation, as this has been a role that he's played for almost two decades. Item B, under status reports, is... Item B, under Status Reports, is regarding the change in city polling locations. Just a reminder for anybody who's watching or for anybody who has questions, that the, there are two changes in polling locations. If you previously voted at Washington School, you will now be voting at the Smart Zone Building, located at 2345 Meridian Street. And if you previously voted at Lincoln School, you will now be voting at St. Joseph Church, located at 1101 Minneapolis Street. Again, if you formally voted at Washington School, you will now be voting at the Smart Zone Building on Meridian Street, 2345 Meridian Street, very close to the municipal airport. And if you previously voted at Lincoln School, you will now be voting at St. Joseph Church at 1101 Minneapolis Street. If you have any questions, please call City Clerk's Office or my office. And again, appreciate the work that City Clerk's staff is doing on this project relocation.
Any questions? Okay, moving on.
Item C, under Status Reports, regards to Upper Peninsula 2017 Police Memorial Service. On this, Chief Riley is planning to present to the City Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Evening, Chief.
Labani.
Right outside, right?
Yep. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a bill into law, making May 15th of each year Police Officers Memorial Day. The week that that day falls in is recognized as National Police Week, to honor those officers that have lost their lives in the performance of their duties. In 1996, law enforcement agencies across the Upper Peninsula and bordering agencies from Wisconsin and Ontario, Canada began recognizing the ultimate sacrifice made by the officers with a memorial service held during National Police Week. The ceremony is hosted by different regions in the Upper Peninsula annually. Chippewa County Agencies are to host the event this year, 2017. It's our turn in the barrel. The event will be held on, and this is a correction from what's in your package, I put Saturday in here, it's actually Thursday, May 18th. It will begin with a procession of law enforcement vehicles from the Upper Peninsula, Wisconsin, and Ontario, starting at the National Guard Armory on Portage, to Ashman, Ashman to Easter Day, Easter Day to the North Center at LSSU, where the ceremony will be held. Law enforcement officers and families, after the ceremony, law enforcement officers and the families of fallen officers are invited to attend a luncheon at no cost to them. This is a tradition that was started by the group that started this program, providing a luncheon after the services for the families. The meals, the programs, and other supplies are paid for by the Upper Peninsula Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund. This keeps the hosting agency and the municipality from having to pay for the costs of this. The fund is supported by contributions from local citizens, businesses, organizations, and the sale of wristbands commemorating fallen officers. Donations to the fund can be made at any area law enforcement agency, and that includes the two tribes, the Sioux Tribe, Bay Mills Tribe, MSP, Chippewa County Sheriff's Department, and the Sioux St. Marie Police Department. We will gladly accept any contributions that are made, you can either mail it to the department or bring it in. And it goes to one fund, and that fund rotates with this program around the Upper Peninsula. Doesn't just stay here. Wristbands are available at the local agencies that I just spoke of, as well as the Clerk's Office. They're $2. I have some back there on the table. Make sure I got everything.
Will this be, will the media outlets know about this so that people line the streets? Is that what's happening?
Absolutely. We're going to contact the media. The individual that's heading this for us this year is Lieutenant Joe Shire from MSP. We're all meeting, but he's kind of putting it together and lining everybody up. But the media will be contacted. It is a media event, I have attended a couple of these, and the media is there. We're going to be getting ahold of the press ahead of time to let people know. And I was really impressed with St. Ignace, that was the first one I attended. Started at the casino and went through town, and all the shop owners came out in respect. We try not to hit the sirens, we will hit the lights, but we'll take up the whole street. I'll get with Linda to close the streets down.
Great. Any questions? Ms. Westers?
Thank you.
Goodbye. Thank you.
Item D, under Status Reports, is an update from the EDC regarding the Upcoming Construction Summit. On this matter, EDC Executive Director Holt is planning to present to the City Commission.
Evening, Jeff.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Thank you for the opportunity. As you may know, the Economic Resource Alliance was formed in early 2016, and it's made up of local agencies that are active in our community. The goal is to provide a clearinghouse for entrepreneurs, both starting out and existing that require local assistance. The mission of our group is to market Sioux St. Marie and our areas to promote businesses, climate advantage, educate partner organizations about our goals, promote local success stories, facilitate communication between partner organizations, and to grow local business. This will be done in several ways, including improved communication to promote success, workshops to help startups, concierge program for businesses that may want to start or locate here, and cohesive marketing. We've accomplished several steps, and for your reference, our website and social media presence has seen an uptick in traffic and inquiries, and we've come a long way in six months. The events that we've done so far, as most of you know, is the Open House in October of 2016, the Manufacturing Event in December of 2016, and the Business After Five at the Hampton Inn, which was just last week. In January, our alliance went into goal-setting mode, and many ideas came from our members, was voted upon, and we put our efforts on this list of items for the remainder of 2017. Our goals are as follows: to support the Developer Summit through EUP Regional Planning, and that will be coming up later in the summer; to formulate five properties to develop and market through construction event that I'll speak to in a moment, and some other issues. We also are working on the Concierge Program, which you have already been presented with. I have with me the upcoming, copies of the Upcoming Construction Summit on April 4th at Lake Spurier State University. And as you will see, and you may have already forgotten this, but please pass this around. We have got several guest speakers lined up. One is from the Corps of Engineers, and he'll talk about projects that are coming up in our area. And also, M.Dot is going to speak at this event. And the whole idea behind this construction event is to allow local developers and construction operators to highlight several of our properties that are available for development. And there are several that we've got identified in our community. So that's a brief update on our ERA Group and the Concierge Program.
Let me just state, the activities that I have been attending with the EDC's sponsorship have been really done well, a lot. The amount of people, businesses that are there just seems to be so much better than it has been in past years, and nothing against them, but it just seems that there's an additional...
Resurgence.
Yeah, just, people are coming out, are getting involved, just at the Hampton Inn with the folks there that want to continue to support city of Sioux St. Marie and do some other endeavors here, which is very encouraging, and I hope that they're able to do that. But I certainly have to commend yourself and Tracy for, you know, hit the ground running, and it's been nothing but up since you've been there. So I'm sure I speak for the Commission, and continue the good work, I'm sure it will bear fruit.
Thank you. We'll work hard to try to promote our area and, to quote our mayor, to create wealth.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the Status Report component of this agenda. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven, matters presented by the public. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to make a comment at this time? Yes. Oh, how about a wrap-up of the Battle of the Badges?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Commissioners, I just wanted to provide a little follow-up. Annual Battle of the Badges took place this past Saturday, and I'm happy to report that Police and Fire Battle of the Badges this year raised $3,967.35.
I'm just here to make sure he doesn't forget a very important thing.
That's a police one.
Just a little margin. The police did have quite a lead over the Fire Department this year by a score of 16 to 9. And I know those scores sound high, but remember, we do do the Buy a Goal campaign and all that, that fun stuff. Again, really fun time. Our attendance was up again from last year, so this is an event that continues to grow. For those of you who don't know, we did provide our collection this year for the Sioux Schools pantry. So not only did we provide them with monetary support, but also with an entire truckload full of clothing that they're going to get.
Yeah, great.
I just want to take 30 seconds to mention some of our sponsors and some of the help that we received. Thinking of You, Sioux Boutique, Wicked Sister, Arvstrom's National Office Products, the Sioux Eagles, who gave us a $500 donation, Sioux Tribe Cultural Center, Sioux Motors, Sovereign Communications, Eagle Radio, and obviously, I, we could not have done this without the staff in the City Clerk's Office. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Job well done, both Police and Fire, we, I'm sure the Sioux Schools appreciate that very much. Anyone else? Okay, item number eight, matters presented by the Commission. City Commission, first of all, just let me thank Jen for doing an exceptional job tonight. I know you haven't done this very often, but we do appreciate your diligence. Commissioner? Commissioner Lynn?
Before I close, I have a 30-minute dissertation on the life of a City Commissioner. I'd like to start right now. Move to adjourn.
Support. The move's support, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.